Okay, I would like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for Monday, May 12th, 7:02 PM. It's like a funny joke, but it actually works out that way.
Always does.
I really did not do that on purpose. So before I move on to the first agenda item, Emila is a now permanent member of the Village of Lansing Planning Board, so she's moved up from alternate, so she will, from now moving forward, be a full voting member. So first item on the agenda. Yay. Just sign the paper.
Thank you all.
So the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for April 29th, 2025. I know that got distributed. There were quite a few comments, so thank you, everybody.
Yes, I took everybody's down. You can approve it if you want to, but I reported everybody's changes and suggestions.
We trust you.
Any further comments on the minutes?
As long as Lisa's last name is spelled right. I caught that.
You know what's right when Lisa says, "I have no other address."
Not necessarily.
I know there was the, these things are in the wrong order, so there you go. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the April 29th minutes amended.
I will move to approve the amended April.
Second.
Question by Jerry.
Minutes of the April 29th meeting.
Second by Lisa. All in favor? Aye. Next item on the agenda is the public comment period, so this is an opportunity for anyone from the public to mention anything that's not already on the agenda for this evening.
I'm Carla Marso. Here's a server for the community board.
Hey, Carla.
Kathy Yen, a server for the trustees.
Hey, Kathy. Okay, hearing no other items, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
Second.
By Emila, second by Lisa, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And next item on the agenda is the public hearing for special permit number 2025-4851. Angie Yen is proposing to open a daycare and after-school program in a portion of a building located at 2343 North Tripphammer Road, tax parcel number 4211-3-5, which is owned by Lama Brothers LLC. The proposal is a change of use with a change of applicable parking needed, which requires a special permit in the commercial medium traffic district. So I'll, I have to motion to open up a permit. So I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
And by Lorraine. All in favor?
Aye.
Mike, do you want to kick us off?
Sure. We have Angie here, and I'm going to go over a couple little things, Angie, and if you want to explain, you know, what your ideas are. I know you sent the planning board a write-up of, you know, what you're proposing. I did receive the special permit mailing test taken care of. You also have a copy of the report back from the county for the GM L T 39. They had nothing really to comment about. Originally, this was probably a special permit because it's a change in use. There used to be, in that side of the Lama building, used to be a doctor's office, I believe. My correct, there was a doctor's office in there. And what Angie has to do is she wants to bring in what the Uniform Code classifies as a group needs in education, better education. And, and just to give you a little bit of information, what Angie is proposing is also, it does have some state regulation. You're going to be required to have an operating permit every year, which I'll come and do a fire inspection, just to make sure everything's up to date, and that gets sent to the state. It's just all part of what New York State is. So I'm sure you're already well aware of that. As far as the parking goes, our voting doesn't really tell how much parking is required for education. I'm sure the two-and-a-half-year-olds have the driver's license yet, so there won't be a whole lot of scooters and stuff parked out there.
Big wheels?
Yeah.
No big wheels?
People dropping, I'm sure parents dropping people off, but there is plenty of parking in that parking lot.
Yeah, for that.
Well over what they, what they really need. So that's not really an issue. After that, it's up to you, the planning board, decide whether the sidewalks and the tree law, you know, whether that's going to be in effect or not. And that's basically all I have.
Yeah, great. Angie, we'll kick it over to you to, you know, just kind of talk to us about anything you want to talk to us about.
Yes, I'm going to run a daycare based on Montessori teaching method, and I'm going to, so maybe total 32 children here, from three months to five years old. So I, I was, I was, I worked as an assistant director in the Montessori school for one year, and I am running, I have been running a Chinese school in Iskafar for eight years. So I'm going to do a training goal, a Montessori school here, so I want the children can get high-quality, any child, any education. So I think, so I'm going to, for meeting, for meeting the requirement of New York, New York Education Department, so I, I have to end one case toilet and end some, end some things. And also, I will take down some walls to make the, make the medical office into larger classroom. That's what I do.
Just, not to interrupt you, but just so you know, it really doesn't have anything to the planning board, but the, if you are educating seven-and-a-half-year-olds or under, you need, the reason why Angie's doing some of around the walls is you have to have direct access to the outside.
To get the case of safety.
Access the building with one exit, not go down the hallway or anything, it has a direct exterior access.
Because I was glad you, so we're really addressing, because I remember we had, some time ago, someone else came wanting to do, I think it was on Broadway Road, and we went through all of, the whole special permit, and then we realized we had no control whatsoever over anything, because it wasn't allowed use. And the state controls a lot of things, such as what you just said.
Yes, one of the biggest items that you'll probably have to rule on or take a look at is Angie has proposed to have an outside play area.
Yes.
And we assume with that building, the toast to the world recommends some type of fencing to lock that off, so.
Right. Yeah. Can you talk a little bit about that? Because obviously, I've seen the plans and I've read everything, and I was very concerned about that outdoor playground area, because it's so close to the sidewalk in Tripphammer Road, and I wondered what kind of fencing that you were planning on putting up?
Yeah, I will, I will use close fencing around the, so here. So here is the building, my part, here is my part. So I'm going to build a fence along the road, road is here, so along here, and.
So what kind of a fence, though? Is it going to be a really tall, high fence? So people that are walking down the sidewalk will not be able to see in?
Right, right. They can't walk in, so.
Well, I mean, I don't even, I want to know, can they, will they still be able to see in, or is the fence going to be high enough?
The fence is at least five, five feet, five feet high is the requirement.
Okay. And what, is it going to be wood? Is it going to be a wood fence?
It's going to be wood, yes, wood fence.
Oh, okay.
Is it, is it an open fence, where you can see through it, or is it solid?
We will, solid, so, so, so others can't, can't see, can't see the, can't see inside.
So they won't, yeah, so people walking by on the sidewalk will not be able to see the children?
People wa, people.
Walking by on the sidewalk, on the.
They can't, they can't see the children.
Okay, so they, it's, so they, okay, so that's important, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Because it's just so, that one section is just so, I know you can't tell by looking at the plans, but when you drive by, you can see how close it is to the sidewalk in Tripphammer, and it made me very nervous.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm flexible. If, if God asked me, require me build some kind of fence, I can do it. So any, any fence, you, I can do it.
Okay, so it sounds like you haven't planned the fence yet, but we can put in as a condition that the fence is a solid wood fence. Okay.
There are, to the south, there are businesses, and there are, there's quite a bit of a hedgerow with some mature trees in there. I'd advise you between now and the next time, just to stop by there and pull one there and take a look, because I understand what you're saying, it's close to the road, but it's not as close as it, as it seems. I mean, go there and stand there, and you'll see that it's a little bit back off the road with the playground, and it's pretty secluded where it's at. So that's be my advice, is to go check it out, stop by there and take a look at what it looks like.
I think the privacy issue is important. I'm not sure five feet is quite high enough for people walking by. I just, I don't know. I don't have enough experience with, with that, but.
It might not be, I mean, I'm five, I'm 5'7", so.
Do you have a limitation on fence heights?
Anything that's over six foot, you're not needing a permit for, because it's structural.
Okay, so maybe we request six foot then, instead of five.
Well, what kind of permit?
Building permit.
Sure. Which means get a building permit anyway.
So that's, that's right here, right in there, because there's the one.
Okay.
So it'd be back in there.
So yeah, so there really is actually a pretty substantial, I'll bring it up on the screen really quick, there is a pretty substantial hedgerow in between the two properties. Excuse me.
So the footprint of the building is not changing at all, in terms of our tree law, right?
Not as far as I've seen.
Okay.
And she does not own that, she's rented.
Right, so, right, so she's.
Oh, she's leasing, that's right, good, that takes that out of the equation.
My site plan only shows walls being moved around.
Right.
Yeah, so here up on the screen is, right, that's the Lama building. She'd be up in this area here, so in between that property and this one, there is a pretty substantial hedgerow.
That includes residential properties.
Oops, sorry.
That's right.
Sorry. So there, you can at least see there is, at least some buffering between those two properties. It doesn't necessarily address the walking on.
Yeah, that's.
Tripphammer, right, once you get to here.
That's what I'm concerned about.
You kind of see that.
I'm concerned about the property on the other side. I'm concerned about right, right.
Yeah, once you get here, it opens up. But I think even with, you know, that, that neighboring property, it's not buffering we're concerned about, it's security and fencing.
Right, right.
And I see that you have allotted for two new trees. It says new trees, and has two listed on your site, your site plan.
Excuse me, new what?
New trees.
New trees?
Yep.
No.
Oh. It says new trees.
I'll show you what.
There's the two trees we see right there.
I don't.
No.
I don't think so.
Those are on the, they're not, yeah, those are.
Oh.
No. I think maybe it's wrong, something wrong, there's no, no new trees.
Would be good for.
Shade, yes.
Shade for, for children especially, yeah.
It's a good idea.
Somebody must have made a mistake on that.
Yes, we, we want new trees, yeah.
No new trees.
No.
That's a mistake.
Need that revised.
And if they're going to revise it, I would love to have the sidewalk in the ground as well, because it makes it a little easier for us to understand how far the fence is back from the sidewalk, if the sidewalk is drawn in. So when, when you reach out to John Driscoll, you can have him take off those new trees and add the sidewalk.
You mean, I, I, I should make, I should put the monument on the.
Yeah, so we see, we see where the road is on the plan.
Okay.
But we don't see where the sidewalk is, so we would have, we would ask that you have him add the sidewalk on, and also remove those two trees from the, from the kind of proposed site plan here.
They're, they're there, it's just they're not new.
I think they are.
I don't, I don't know. Those aren't the trees.
Oh, they aren't those trees?
They're spread apart, and they're right by the road. That's not these two.
Yeah, this is all the trees. This is all the property. You want to remove this? Yeah, said no, and then in here, you can have them put in the sidewalk.
Okay.
Hey, Angie.
Michael.
I'll send a note to John. I've been talking with John about this, so I'll send a note to him about what we're looking, what the planning board is looking.
Okay.
What other questions do folks have, other than trees and?
So there's not a problem with parking.
Yeah, it doesn't.
I guess the only other thing is, is in the past, when somebody has come, we've talked about other things that might have happened here in the past, and the traffic concern could present some issues in that when you're coming out of there, I used to go to someone who was there, it's sometimes hard to make a left turn. So it may be that ultimately, we might have to find that it's a right turn only, but I guess it's been working for people.
I take a left turn out of there when I have to go, and I don't find it too difficult.
Okay.
Yeah, same out of there.
Sometimes you hit the lights, right?
Yeah, I was going to say, we'll just see if anything, if it becomes a problem. I know that that was some concern that came up, but this is going to be, they're not going to all be coming at the same time.
Man, a traffic, a traffic light right there might not be the world's worst idea in the future, anyway.
Well, they're.
The time-of-day parking. Oh, it's McDonald's that I'm working.
Yeah, right.
That's when it gets kind of rough, yeah.
But you know, if.
But that's not, that's not.
I don't know what her hours will be, but if she's got 32 people showing up between 8:00 and 8:30 to drop their children off, and then they're trying to get out of that driveway, and they want to go left, right, left.
Yeah.
It's going to back up the traffic, it'll, I mean.
But I think people will figure it out, and if necessary.
Yeah, they'll just turn right and go.
Right, right, and then go around block, yeah.
Is what would happen, but I mean, that's what, one of the things we've said, maybe, you know, if it becomes necessary, that's what.
I've done it before, you take, I take a ride, I go to Target, I get my Starbucks, and then I go up to the next lot.
I mean, it's probably no different than the other daycare over on Warren Road. I always remember when I used to work and I'd be coming home that way, I always felt sorry for those people trying to get out of that driveway. Oh, I was like, how do they get out of that driveway?
She's, she's here.
I know.
Maybe.
Get out of there.
Okay.
Other questions, though? Anything?
No. I think the change of use is fine, and I think any, some of the concerns we have, a lot of it are going to be state regs, in terms of all of the, for the daycare stuff, and you'll be involved with that, seeing that that happens, I guess. So.
I mean, revised plans? I would love to, it said new trees, I would love to see a couple of trees.
I would love some new trees, if there's room for it.
I think they, I think they would be great. So I think the biggest concerns probably from the board, mine included, are just security and safety, obviously, you know, given the, given what you want to do there. And I think trees really lend themselves to that, both privacy for the children that would be there, some, you know, shade from the sunlight for the children that would be there, so it might be something to, you know, to think about.
Yeah, I mean, if you were going to add, because there is that hedgerow, which does.
Right, which is nice.
Some shade, but, and certainly in the afternoon, you get more shade even from the street trees, but there are no trees on the back of the building to cast shade in the morning. So some sort of tree like over, you know, in, in the, in the far back, more like.
Back there on this area.
Yeah, either, either within the fence, if you want to have it within your space, or outside the fence, if you want it outside, where the kids can get to it, that would be a lovely thing to cast shade for your play area.
So put a new trees?
It would be wonderful.
Yeah, right, if there's an opportunity to put those in there, I think that would definitely be appreciated by the board.
Okay.
Michael, send a note, then.
Okay. And I honestly think like just one tree in the back, and then instead of two in the front, one in the front, is more than adequate. You don't need two in the front, because you've already got two.
It's got good shade there, anyway, I think, yeah, there's an opportunity, yep. Okay?
Okay.
So yeah, Mike will follow up with you, he'll follow up with John Driscoll, and yeah, we can move forward from there. And there's no, I guess we were waiting for this meeting before we did like a, oh, there's nothing.
It's open, yeah.
Yeah, okay, there's nothing for that, right? Okay.
So we'll keep it open till next meeting?
Absolutely, yeah, we always keep them open, one meeting anyway, so we'll chat with you at the next meeting if you're ready. Just work with Mike, and they'll get you on the agenda.
So before, before next meeting, can I, can I start the construction?
The only thing that you.
Take down the wall, because I, I need to end, end install the fair Adam system.
What you can do is, I mean, this has happened before, you can have John send me in all the information, you can do, you can, you can apply for the building permit. I can't approve anything until the planning board actually says okay, but at least you'll be able to start the process. I can start a plan review on your plans and all that type of stuff. So what I'll do is I'll send you and John an email tomorrow, and give you a list of items that can be done at this point, and then give you kind of a schedule of what's going to happen over the next couple of weeks. Does that sound okay?
Okay.
And so, and so the next meeting is, what date is that?
The day after Memorial Day.
Oh, that's right. Okay. 27.
27, the other. And Lorraine, you're not going to be here for that one?
I'm not, neither is.
Angie, you're not going to be here for that one?
Correct.
Are you going to be here, Emila? Are you going to be here?
I will be here.
Okay.
Should I, should I show up next meeting, on next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, right now, I would say yes, we're, Mike, you and, you can communicate with Michael on that.
You can also do via Teams, if you don't want to have to come in person.
Yes, because I will go back to China.
Okay.
During, yes.
Yeah, absolutely, we always, we're so happy that you're here to present this to us, but now that we've at least met you once, obviously, if we have to follow up, and you need to do it over Zoom or Teams or whatever, that's fine, yeah.
Well, she goes back to China, that's like a 12-hour time difference. When, when do you go back to China?
It's Wuhan, so it's middle of China.
No, middle of. What date?
When?
When, yeah.
14, 14 to 30.
Oh, of May?
Yeah.
Yeah, of May.
Having to be, yeah, so it's 7:00 AM, yeah.
Yeah, that's, okay, all right.
And then when do you come back?
Yeah.
And you come back when?
Come back on 30, May 30.
Oh.
Yes, I can do absolutely.
Great, yes.
Everyone's leaving. I know, it's just crazy.
Okay, so yeah, we'll plan on, whether it's in person or online, we'll plan on seeing you at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion of village code changes and corrections. Mike and Natalie have just been crushing, crushing this. So Mike, and I think, obviously, both of you sent some, some emails, I don't know who wants to start.
Sorry, I only saw it like six.
I did.
But I, but I quickly pulled out my book and marked my pages.
I had some questions written up, but Natalie's much nicer than I did. And these were what you had mentioned. This, you mentioned Lisa's, Natalie had questions?
Right, yes. No, I was, exactly.
So, I mean, yeah, we can ask these questions about each use, we may come up with some different questions, ask what kind of, Emila's idea of trying to get a, some type of, to review these uses. I picked out, you have the charter uses, I picked out five randomly. I also gave you definitions of the, so however you want to start reviewing them, that's kind of what you guys.
Natalie, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I just went back to that meeting from mid-March, mid to late March, and listened back and typed up the questions that I had thought would be helpful in reviewing the code. If anyone wants to go back and watch it, I gave the timestamp if you.
Yeah, I thought that was great, thank you.
This is the most interesting part of the meeting, right here.
I didn't sit through all 35 minutes, so I did skip ahead.
I started you off with a pretty easy one, the high, high-traffic food and beverage.
Okay.
And as you can see, it's a restaurant, whether without a bar, which is drive-in, drive-through, carry-out, assembly services, exclusively drive-in, drive-through, carry-out, food and beverage establishments, bars or taverns are your, are your examples. Another one, you know, right now, you need a special permit in the commercial high-traffic, which on your map is the dark purple.
Yeah, so do people want to chat about this tonight? Do we want to chat about it at the next meeting?
I think we should get started.
I was going to say, my preference, my preference would.
I know, and all of us.
If you did 6:30, let's at least chat about it, for general discussion, so.
We sort of have in mind, we knew what, I just couldn't remember what it was, it just knew it was a good idea.
Yep.
Okay, okay, so the only place that that is allowed is, okay, that was.
Commercial high-traffic.
It's commercial high-traffic, yeah.
And is, is it because it's drive-through? Why is it?
I think so. You're talking about high-traffic, and with the, with the, you know, like a Taco Bell, you've got a lot of cars coming in.
McDonald's. So does that mean that the Chinese food restaurant is not?
It is not, it's in medium.
Yeah, that was, yeah, in fact, it used to even be.
So that's under what, low-traffic food and beverage? Yeah, that's what that would be.
There's a, there's a low-traffic food.
Yeah, it's five or six lines down.
It's also highlighted, and the.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Low tri, it's about the fourth one down.
So just without a drive-through.
Yeah, I was going to say, drive-through is always the thing.
And that's the big, yeah, that's the.
Would you want to allow a drive-through on the parcel where a good Chinese food restaurant is? That seems slightly out of place, that.
Right, so I was going to say, that parcel where the Chinese food places seems to me that it, it kind of coincides with others, like where the Taco Bell is, where the McDonald's is, where that is. So it might not be a, that might be more of a question of is that zoned right?
Correctly.
Versus, for that area, I would say yes. If you move to, you know, pick another random lot, I don't think that it would necessarily, it's the drive-through piece of it that is questionable.
You're talking about Eric's, Long De Foe Chinese Restaurant?
Yes.
Where it is now, yeah, yeah, that spot, I think that, I don't know, put a McDonald, put a Burger King there, whatever, I think that that could work there.
Because, yeah, it's not the direct onto.
Right, right.
Before we ask that, and then Lorraine, this would be a place where you could lend a little expertise in the comp plan, and the comp plan revisions that you've been working on, you know, there's a thought about how we would like the area to develop, and if we want more things that look like McDonald's and have that kind of fabric right on Tripphammer, then yes, we would say, of course, we can do these things. If in revising the comp plan, we've talked about how we want to include more mixed-use things, then having that as a, as frontage onto Tripphammer may not be appropriate. So have you guys had any discussion about that? Kathleen is here too, also, that's why I'm looking at her.
We have talked about it.
We've also talked about possibly making zoning changes for different areas, based on how things are now, and how things are going to be changing, and specifically in certain areas.
Well, and so what I would.
Had anything, Kathleen?
So what I would say for the case of this exercise, though, is it's not so much what could it be in the future, it's more of, right, because we don't know, and that's a separate project, completely aside from what we're discussing here. That was just an example, but. It would actually seem logical to put the, we allow this in commercial medium traffic.
Yeah.
Except you want to think of this, though. If you take a look at your map, and let's say you're in commercial, medium traffic, you get a couple more drive-throughs in there, what does that make?
Right, right.
It's gonna be a mess.
Right, we just had the conversation about, you know, a potential daycare coming out there, there's already McDonald's there. It's, I mean, we, we all drive-through there, it's congested at certain times of the day, and it's not so much just that it's con, you know, congested, we can all wait there, but. It also, you know, that poses, as we talk about making the village more walkable or more various things, that introduces risk to, we want to make it more walkable.
Right.
We don't want to introduce eight new drive-throughs.
Exactly.
Um, that kind of defeats the purpose.
You know, and like where Taco Bell is as a drive-through, because you come off of, and then you're already, you're, you're already in the fabric of a parking lot, so it kind of makes sense.
That area where it is, it's not a walkable area, yes, you can walk through and safely, but you're not right.
Right, but it's a different.
Right.
And there's only one entrance there. I think, um, I think one of the hard parts, well, in terms of the one property you were just talking about, there's, is a light there that would allow them.
Yep.
But when you get down to, um, I guess it's Cathwood, that one is a problem, I think, by the, um, car wash. That one is always very weird, and the road kind of changes, and, you know, I want to go to Tops, I hang out in the right hand, people are wanting to, it's something, when we get to that corner, I think.
Yeah, that is a little, yeah.
Right, and it's, it's that planning too, it's, we know what it is now.
Yeah.
What is it, wasn't it?
Right, and, and the other thing too to consider is, is this one thing that I feel like, um, we've, we've done is, we haven't given an appropriate hierarchy of roads. So for instance, if you look at how wide Trip Hammer is, the fact that there's, you know, um, that Pyramid Drive and Cathwood Road are actually as wide as Trip Hammer, and same thing with, um, with Graham, there, there is big. And frankly, Trip Hammer should be our largest road, and anything coming off of that should be smaller, narrower, and have that other fabric, and that would lend itself towards, well, a few things. I mean, if we wanted to, um, if we wanted to shrink the roadside, we could put in really wide sidewalks and bike infrastructure with the lane that we might be able to pull back. And that makes everything feel more walkable.
Yeah, but I guess this is all hypothetical, but I'm.
It is.
But narrowing, um, so Graham Road's coming out of the shopping center or Cathwood, same thing, narrowing those, I don't think would be a good idea. I mean, they're congested, and some people want to go straight or turn left out of Cathwood, but a lot of people just want to turn right and get on thirteen or cross the bridge.
But turning left.
Folks are gonna end up, you know, backed up behind, although, if you have just a single lane, and same thing with the.
That's why you want, you want three lanes, but not four. What we have right now is we have four lanes, we have, um, like a Graham Road here, you have two lanes that come in and two lanes that come out.
Well, four total.
Yeah, so what's, the, the ideal fabric would be to bring it down at least to three lanes, so that you, you have, you know, one coming in, and then two going out, so that you have someone who can take a right turn without being stopped behind someone waiting to turn left. So, so like if you think about, if you think about, um, road design and road engineering, that's kind of like the, um, the, the, the best practice standard for things where you have a bigger kind of through road, like Trip Hammer, meeting, um, you know, like commercial and secondary roads.
So what would your thoughts be on Cathwood?
I have to remember exactly what Cathwood looks like, but, um, I would say narrow it as much as is, is reasonable. You only need one road from, one lane from Trip Hammer turning into Cathwood, and then coming out, you've, you can have a right-turn lane and then some, a left-turn lane.
So now they have three coming out, you've got your left turn, your straight, or your right turn.
Right, no.
It's, it's pretty wide there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I forgot, off track.
Anyway, but, but it all, it all kind of feeds back into, you know, um, walkability goals as the village.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Do we think high, uh, high-traffic food and beverage is suitable where it is? I think yes.
Yes.
The level of review, special permit, do you think that's adequate for high, high-density? Or what if this isn't? Commercial.
Opposed to special permit with.
Additional conditions. Then have to.
We can still talk about. And put our own conditions, I think it's fine.
We have to talk about buffering, you're gonna talk about everything else.
I was gonna say, I think for the importance of those sorts of things in the village, also the frequency of them.
Yeah.
You know, there's not this churn that is, you know, every meeting, there's three new things. I think it's, um, I think that fits into a bucket that is pretty, pretty, um, easy for us to say, yes, let's review these.
Okay, but now, so then.
Should it be allowed?
Right.
And do we, what about mixed use?
Well, we're not talking about mixed use yet.
Okay.
Correct.
Talking about high-traffic food and beverage.
You take, you take.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
We haven't finished our first line.
I keep thinking mixed use is gonna be rolled into a bunch of things, but I see, but we have to do this. Okay, no, I think it's fine, just like it is.
I was gonna say, I think it's pretty easy to look at and say, residential, no.
Yes, absolutely.
High-traffic where it is, yes, if we already said, medium traffic's probably not a great idea, low-traffic's not a great idea. Business and tech, business and technology, what if, I mean, let's, let's think about that, that property up there.
I was just gonna say that, so.
That's not a high-traffic.
Yeah, well, that's one of the things that we've talked about is event, whatever's happening over there, because there is something that's happening over there. What if, well.
The business.
The business and tech, yeah.
Up at, by the airport.
Yeah, so what, what if there are businesses, I think right now they're very restricted over there, but what if there's some restaurants that want to go in? Maybe another hotel would want to go in over there, maybe, I don't know, a retail store might want to go in over there.
I think something that caters to, right, in that area there, you've got all kinds of labs, you've got all kinds of other things, um, you do have the hotel there. Would it make sense to have something like high-traffic food and beverage that caters to that area? And would it be disruptive to the, um, kind of intent and nature of that area?
I know.
I don't think it would.
Do you remember, there was, back in the day, I don't, do you remember back in the day, the bar and restaurant that used to be at the, not at.
The restaurant.
Not at the new airport, but at the old airport, the next door, I can't think of what it was called, who, we talked about this.
We, we had.
Landings?
We had a low.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the one we had.
They had a bar and restaurant in there, and that place was always hopping, he was in business for a long time.
I, I would, I would say this, I, um, having, having low-traffic food and beverage in that area, I think makes absolutely good sense.
We allow that.
It's already allowed.
It's already allowed, I don't, I, uh, drive-throughs are, I, I don't know if we want to encourage, here's the thing, as we've seen from our lovely McDonald's here, just the act of staying in your car doesn't mean that you're gonna get your food any faster.
Right.
At all, um, and.
Oh, by drive-through.
It includes, it encourages people to idle in their car.
I know, and idling is the worst.
And I think it also detracts, we're thinking of the business of technology park up by the airport, it detracts from the aesthetic, not only the visual aesthetic of the buildings, you know, having a McDonald's or Burger King, but just sort of the, it's kind of a calm place, it's a nice place to walk up there, it's quiet, and you have a McDonald's or a fast-food place like that, it's, like you said, it's gonna be congested.
Well, then I wonder, I wonder the flip side of that is, um, as we move down through this, right, as we move down through this, is there, are there changes that we can make? We're, we're, obviously, we're talking about zoning, so are there changes that we can make to the zoning that would encourage something like that up there? Because it seems like a good idea, and if not, is that a discussion we can table for another time? Outside zoning that the planning board could recommend that might.
Well, we had the cafeteria thing there for a while, and none of them.
At the airport?
No.
But there's a new one now.
Round Road.
There's another new one.
No, but there was one.
In the airport.
There was, the one in the airport, though, I mean.
No, no, I'm talking about, uh, across the way, about three buildings down from the Marriott.
I remember.
On the right-hand side, and it was before you got on the board.
I was gonna say.
And it was, you know, that was a big deal, and it was, you know, to, to serve the employees and the buildings. And I guess it couldn't survive, sadly, but, um, and, and people used to say the food was good, and that was a low-traffic beverage, which is allowed.
So maybe there's nothing, I mean.
And.
But I. Then, uh, why is it red for BTD?
Additional condition.
Yeah. I had suggested we put plus next to it, because red is hard, and then just, because sometimes it's hard to see.
I guess, what would be the, the substance of those additional conditions? Like, why not just regular special permit, why special permit with conditions?
Say that again, please.
So, um, the, the ones that are in black, simply just say special permit required. In, for instance, low-traffic food and beverage in the Business and Technology District is in red, which would be special permit required with conditions.
There's a list.
Yeah, there's a list, and one forty-five, it's, it's.
Okay, so, I think, um, having a discussion about what those conditions are, and whether it should just go to regular SP, or does it need to be in that one conditions?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you, Natalie, so right now, let's, let's, um, just for the sake of this exercise, sorry, exercise, let's focus on high-traffic food and beverage.
I think it's great, just the way it is.
Even the way it is.
Good, so that's just a special permit? No additional conditions, obviously, if there's a special permit, it's coming here.
I mean.
Only in high-traffic.
Right, only in high-traffic.
And if anybody else wants it in any of these other categories, they would come and have to have a variance.
Yep.
A use variance.
A use variance, yeah, yeah.
Next to impossible.
Use variance, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
But, yeah, I think the drive-through is always a sticking point, it's, it's not a restaurant.
I prefer a drive-through with children, it's hard to get out of the car.
They grow up so fast.
Fast enough.
You know what, during, during COVID, we adjusted so nicely in so many places where, um, you would, you know, like, like say, at the Baker, you pull up and they.
Yeah, they bring it out.
All right, yeah, it doesn't have to be a drive-through, I can order my food, I can go inside the chow, I can get it, I can go.
Although chow will bring it out to you too.
Yeah.
Yes, because that was a big discussion when they, that we, that it was gonna be complicated if it was a drive-through.
Um, do we want to look at another example, or does that?
I think we should, we need one that's harder.
Yeah, I was gonna say that one.
I thought that one was pretty hard.
Yeah, there was a lot of discussion on that.
I know, so.
It's sent down on the list.
Kind of like, um, be more organized about this, like, what are our steps? I mean, I remember last, this meeting, Bella specifically said we should have the steps, go through the steps exactly.
So I think that's what this is. That's what, at least at a high enough.
Haven't really read that.
For us to break apart, for us to look at specific sections on our own, um, that's enough for us to go through and say, yes, we've thought about this, or whatever zone, or for whatever use, um, here's our notes. We're gonna have to come back here and have a discussion about every one of these anyway, but at least, you know, for example, I could go back and I could say, okay, I've got hospital as a zone, I've reviewed this, and this, and this, and this. Here's the notes that I have on these, what do other people think about that?
So I was thinking that probably we would each want to have our own little checklist, where we would then fill in our notes that we could share in advance with people, that's gonna be.
But this is enough to get that going.
And there may.
And whatever else you want to add in there.
I would say, we may have other things that, I'm still sort of struggling with the fact that we have these two sections.
For definition.
For definition.
Yeah, that, which has been confusing me for years, frankly, but you never quite know where.
But so, I think, but, that's separate from, is our zoning accurate? We can move stuff around if we need to in, you know, definitions, doesn't make sense to have it, you know, in, what, you know, the, the use, the, um, you know, one forty-five, three, or eighty-two, whatever. Are they accurate, do they need to be updated, are they in the right place? I guess we could tackle it at the same time.
To be honest, the, um, the earlier ones in one forty-five, three, those, that's kind of terminology.
Those are definitely, literally definitions, not use.
Whereas the use definitions are actually the later on, so they are different, you know, they just happen to have mixed use put in the, the ones that have the terminology for some reason, um, because it's listed out in the wording. So I mean, if anything, that could be improved.
Yeah, maybe.
Well, again, as you go through that, you know, it's not the, the main purpose, right, the main purpose is to make sure the uses fall into the right zones, but if there's something you think should be moved to another place, or consolidated entirely, I don't know if that's, you know.
Okay.
Plausible, but, you know, take note of that, it can be, it can be a discussion point.
Yeah, that's sort of all over the place, isn't it?
Which one?
Indoor rec.
The rec club, yeah, that's in.
Either that one or, or mixed use, I guess, mixed use will be allowed, I think so.
Let's look at light, oh, no, that one's easy too, I was gonna say, the light industry and manufacturing, um.
Yeah, indoor rec.
Let's do indoor rec.
So public or private service club, social club, commercial indoor recreation, bowling, tennis, swimming pool, billiards, arcade, et cetera.
Et cetera, what is?
It is currently allowed with a special permit in high-density residential, commercial low-traffic, commercial medium-traffic, commercial high-traffic, and business and tech. So would you think that is appropriate as currently in the, where it's allowed?
Well, um, I think the only, the one concern might be high-density residential, I suppose.
So do we.
I know, but we have one.
We have, I was just gonna say, we have.
We already have one there.
Just very busy.
And, I was gonna say, is that obtrusive, is it a good thing?
Because it serves the people, I don't know whether, I guess it depends on, like, an arcade is a little different than some things.
I hear very good things about the swim club.
Yeah, exactly, no, exactly.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, it's a neighborhood-scale place, and, and the way that the road is there, it's not like there's a lot of, even though it's, it's a medium-density zone, there's not a lot of housing near there, like right.
I was just gonna say, I've been a member there for years, and I've never even thought of that as high that to the residential.
Well, that was one of the things that came up when that, um, when we went to, when we changed the zoning over there because of the group that was considering a development, you know, that kind of came up, was the swim club. I think social club, though, some could be noisier than others.
Yeah, like, what's your definite, what's your definition of social club?
Well, this is.
I'd say like the country club.
Oh.
Well, this is indoor, this is.
Right, and so this isn't gonna be, so, I'm seeing a lot of things on that, what is it, next door, about Lake Watch being noisy, and the DJ.
Oh, because they had the Cornell thing.
Um, but I mean, there's a potential for that regardless, is what I'm saying, so would, what, would that be classified?
Is that event held outside, were they outside when?
There's an indoor rec, I think it's in the town, because there's an indoor rec center near Lake Watch.
Yeah, right there.
That's East Shore, the East Shore Rec, yeah.
Oh.
That's in the town, right?
Yes.
East Shore Recreation.
Yeah, that's a, a nice spot.
But everything.
It's not obtrusive, I live near there, I never hear.
And everything's.
I think the Lake Watch, that was, I think that was like Cornell, the Cornell students, well, it was the whole slow K thing, and I think they had a really loud DJ, I don't know if they did it outside, or if they actually did it.
Indoor should eliminate.
So I was gonna say, regardless of what happened there, it's, here's our definition.
The key is the in, word indoor, yeah.
The swimming pool is not indoor, by the way, just saying.
Well, it doesn't have to be, but, well, I mean.
And places.
Is the definition relatively understandable?
Okay, so would the swim club constitute an indoor?
That's my question, it's not indoor.
What about the YMCA?
We don't have.
The YMCA would be an indoor, yeah.
We have an outdoor rec club, okay, okay.
No, it's farther down.
But not in current, mm, yes, okay.
Oh, yeah, it's outdoor recreation club down farther.
If the swimming pool were to move down there, do you know what that, I don't, obviously, the, the use definition isn't here, do you know what, off the top of your head?
Is a swimming pool or a what?
If the swimming, if, if swimming pool or, you know, outdoor rec club as opposed to indoor rec.
That's allowed, though.
It's both allowed in high-density.
Yeah, it's allowed in HD.
Oh, okay.
So it's not a problem.
Okay.
Okay, so indoor.
Indoor.
So something like East.
East Shore, I think that would.
I mean, here's the thing too, um, one of the things that we, we can't see in this is what is that building for? Because you could have one of those, like, you know, ugly kind of Quonset hut-looking domes, you know, the, that, and, and have tennis courts, and it's considered an indoor recreation club, but it's not in keeping with.
But, so you have to come here for a special permit, and that is not in aesthetics with the rest of the neighborhood.
The general conditions.
That would be under that aesthetic.
It would not meet general conditions.
Yep.
Okay, I think it still works, what does our code officer think?
About the.
This.
I think that, that.
It, it's, it hasn't been in, should we allow it?
Should be looking at low-density, medium. Where's ours?
Now, don't take.
Research.
Research, yeah.
Don't take, try not to take Lake Watch as an example, because there are non-conforming use there.
Okay, I just don't know.
YMCA would be under that, no?
Could be classified under that, yeah.
Yeah.
Or like Planet Fitness.
I'm trying to think of what other, what other places there are, I, well, Planet Fitness, though, is in the Cuba Mall, right? But what, well, talking about Planet Fitness, what about, then there's Journey Fitness, it's over in the, um, great, what do you call that plaza over by the mall? And then, of course, at the mall, you've got the pickleball place, and there is arcades too. By the mall. And then, of course, at the mall, you've got the pickleball place, and there is arcades, too. Well, one main arcade in the mall.
Yeah.
And a billiard, oh, yeah.
Health and Human Services, I guess it, I mean, if they wanted to have, what if they wanted to have a swimming pool in one of their.
Oh, what if they wanted to have a, right, or a gym?
Or if the research, research.
Perfectly appropriate.
I kind of think it should be allowed, maybe, with.
So, add special permit to those?
I mean, some of those, you know, manufacturers, those that they wanted to have an indoor.
Or how about in human.
Right, right.
Well, I'm also thinking about how we've done in the area kind of adapted use, for instance, over near the Nisek Building, some of those warehouses that would look like they belong in our, in our research kind of area. You know, there's a climbing gym now. There's basketball courts and that kind of thing.
Yeah, see, I think it could be appropriate.
There are?
Of the last two.
There. Over by the Nisek Building?
Really?
Yeah, across, across.
Yeah, they've got an indoor climbing wall there.
I didn't know that.
It's great, it's.
Where is this?
There, in which building? Because I know that.
You know, like, when you go, it's not Duke anymore, but all the rent, like, the heavy equipment rentals down that way, or medium equipment rentals, as you go down there, there's, like, there is the tile place there. As you go down into that industrial park there, yeah, there's a climbing wall inside.
I had no idea. I knew that that factory reopened, right? The factory that's down there reopened? So, they make.
They've got ping pong.
Frames or, frames or something? But I didn't realize there was more stuff down there.
So, no, but I think we maybe would consider expanding into both of those categories.
I would, I would say it would be appropriate.
I think it could be appropriate in those places, yeah.
Special permit. I mean, we still have the protection of saying it's not appropriate.
Do you have to talk about that?
And Health and Human Resources, are you talking?
Yeah.
Research and health, well, I guess research, let's forget about, do we really only have one thing zoned as research in the village, by the way? I guess I've never picked up on that. Is this it?
It's only.
It's just that.
Yeah, but, but that's it, right? You have a zone for just that?
Okay, where is it?
If you're looking at, put it in Health and Human Resources.
That pale yellowy thing?
It's not that.
Oh, that one over across?
Different than E and T.
Right, yeah, exactly, yeah.
And it's all butted by areas that allow it.
Yep, everything around it is that same way.
Except for that little medium-density bit.
And to be honest, it may help the parcel that's to the north of Arleos.
Yeah. Oh, right.
An empty parcel.
All right.
Aren't they gonna put apartments or something in back there?
Yeah.
I think the big issue.
Are you, oh, are you, oh, you're talking about the other.
In and out. Wasn't the ingress and egress was an issue with that parcel, because.
E, residential, yes. That was a big thing. You have enough, too much traffic down right there, too close to the light of war.
Yeah. Okay.
But, so.
So, back to indoor recreation club.
Yes.
We think it'd be appropriate to expand allowable use into research and human health services.
Yes, with special permit.
Special permit, okay.
And it's just a special permit, okay? I don't think we need special permit with conditions there. It's gonna come, yeah.
Like I said, this is, you're gonna be proposing with the board and trustees.
Right, they can.
They're gonna have the same discussion.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, right, I was gonna say, as we finally do break apart into whatever individuals or groups, however we end up doing it, take good notes, because when, you know, just good lesson learned, anyway. When we do go to present this to the trustees, I want, you know, us all to have good talking points about, whether it's, you know, each person discussing their own sections, or if it's, you know, one of us discussing all the sections to the trustees, have good talking points about that.
So, are we gonna have one presentation with all of the changes? That's something that would take a long time, I think. How would we give it to them and then?
Yeah, I like to always be able to say, right, here's a thing that we want to do. This could be a lot. So, it might be better, right, to figure out a way, I'll talk to Ronnie.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
It might be good for us to figure out a way to get them all the information, let them review it, let them ask questions, and us answer it before, maybe we have, like, a formal presentation about the changes, because it could be a lot.
Well, it is a lot.
We've got a lot of uses, we've got a lot of zones. So, I'll talk to Ronnie, though, and I'll ask him.
What process, yeah, I think we need to.
A good process for it.
Understand what the process is.
I think it could be equally as difficult, by the way, saying, let's attach, you know, attack these things onesy-twozy or five at a time, I mean.
Well, I was thinking, maybe.
Even half of it could still be, or maybe that's the right answer. Maybe it's top half, bottom half, or whatever. But, yeah, I'll talk to Ronnie and we'll figure out, he and I have a good way to get this all presented, you know, between the planning board and the trustees and addressed.
So, we like high-traffic the way it is, and we think.
Indoor rec, research, and human health services.
Adding to that.
Yep.
Okay, so, moving along to light industry.
Well, so, do we want to do a third one, or is this enough of a couple examples? One less, yes, it looks, one, no, here we recommend these changes for people to go off and tackle a couple things on their own.
I think I would like to see one that has the.
Next use.
You wanna go through one more?
I would like to.
You're gonna pick next use, okay.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna say, I'd like to see one that has the special permit with condition.
So, let's go to low, let's go to low-traffic food and beverage. That's got a couple special.
Oh, that has a special.
That's a couple special permits and one with conditions.
Right. Okay, so now we need 145.
Yes.
Okay, and that would be.
What page?
145094.
You have this all memorized, right, Mike?
094.
Conditions?
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Yeah, 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 I got it.
There's a lot of, what I would think of as restrictive conditions.
You got uniform call members? Good for you.
Okay, okay.
What is it, 145, what?
094.
102.
Oh, yeah, Ella said 09.
Oh, 094. Oh, no.
Not on the website.
Oh.
That's where I'm going.
No, no, no.
Up to date. 14560M. It's, it's letter M.
Oh, oh, yeah, I got that from Mike Baker.
Wait, where's the letter M?
That's the section.
Little section.
In our book, though, it's on 094. 145094.
Okay, I'm on the right page.
It's M, low-traffic food and beverage and business and tech.
I don't have an M on mine.
What?
Oh, Jesus. Oh, here. This is what my 145, my books aren't sure they're dated.
Oh, my goodness.
14509.
Oh, I found 145M, yeah.
14.
14560.
14.
M.
How come our pages don't look the same? They're completely different.
You're on 14560.
So, let's, let's go back.
I'm going to your page.
Right, no, no, no.
Oh, all right, what's the?
If you go by these numbers.
Yeah.
I can't.
These are the section numbers, so go to 14560.
And 145. 3 or 103?
103.
Here you go. You're on 14590.
Oh, my God.
For it to look exactly like that.
You're 145103.
All right, so we've got three different page numbers.
There you go.
That's one, okay.
It starts at 102.
Whose book is?
Oh, I was gonna say, if it's on M, yeah, okay. So, it's like, it's like the last five lines on.
What page is?
It's 145102. Is the page number.
I have started, this is the new one. I don't, my old.
This is the book that Jody gave me when I started, and I've been diligent about updating. Anytime Mike gives us a new handout.
What?
So, anyway.
So, it is under, if you're gonna look in your codebook, it is under, it's under 14560M.
Yes, well, we've got the.
Which is page 145102 in the code, if you're in the online.
On the online. If you're me, it's 145.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be pretty close, though.
What date do you have at the bottom of here?
What date is that?
October.
Number 2022.
Okay, October 2024 is the updated online.
And I have October 22. Oh, my God.
This is why I use the online.
Nobody ever gave me an update.
Okay, okay. All right.
Do we have, is the language the same, though?
So, we are looking at low-traffic food, it might be the same.
It was not amended since 2011, so it should be the same. Okay, so, for low-traffic currently allowed with a special, special permit only in commercial, medium traffic, and commercial high traffic, special permit with additional conditions in business and tech.
Do you want me to?
All of these special conditions.
I'm looking at your, I know, I was like.
There's a lot. Okay, so, in which district is it currently allowed? What level of authorization?
Where should it be allowed? Okay, so, looking at the definition there?
No more.
Yeah, so, it's interesting, too. So, if you, let's focus on, well, just because it's the first one, where you've got special permit with conditions in business and technology. In business and technology, there shall be no more than four low-traffic food and beverage services, service uses located within the business and technology district.
Okay.
That's one of the things, right? So, one of the things is trying to limit how many there are there, right? We don't just wanna take over every piece there with low-traffic food and beverage, which makes sense. Such food and beverage service use shall be located within and operated from a building in the business and technology district and shall not occupy more than 2,000 square feet. So, there's a size limitation.
2,000 square feet.
2,000 square feet.
100 by 50 by 4, okay.
Such food and beverage service area may provide no more than 50 interior or exterior onsite seating. So, there, that kind of goes along.
No signage of any kind.
Yeah, and then, yeah, I saw that. No signage of any kind shall be allowed unless approved by special permit.
How are they gonna know?
Well, it can't be approved by special.
Right.
If I'm reading this, I would never want to put a restaurant in here, even though it's allowed. The question is, did we, we wrote this to be restrictive because we didn't want certain kinds of uses, but are we thinking about, are those still permitted?
There should be no more than two interior identification signs.
Right, so, it seems like when we, when we wrote this and we said, yes, you can get it with a special permit. Here's these conditions, right? You can't have more than four. It's gotta be pretty small. You can't have more than 50 seats. If you want signage.
That was a big.
On the outside of the building, there's, right, that's a, a condition. No more than two interior identification signs permitted?
Does this anticipate that it's inside of, like, another building?
It was geared, as I'm remembering, sort of. It was kind of a lot of, that was a long time ago.
Well, 2003 was the last time this chunk was updated.
It hasn't come up for years.
Right.
If you look at number two now.
It was in 2011, okay.
It was supposed to be, yeah, which is like a year after it got on, and it was sort of, it was supposed to be more of an employee cafeteria kind of thing, was, I guess, the intention.
Let me finish these three, because this will just add to the confusion. No more than two interior identification signs permitted. One shall be allowed at the entrance to the space occupied, and one shall be permitted in a window which will be no larger than four square feet. Number six, such food and beverage service area shall, for business only during the regular business hours of those businesses located within the business and technology district.
It's an employee kind of thing.
And under no circumstances open before 5:30 or after 6:00, I paraphrase.
6:00?
Any such food and beverage service provider shall be allowed to accept orders for food and beverage to be picked up or delivered, and shall further allowed to visit buildings with food carts. Yeah, I just can't.
Mobile apparatus.
So, here's a good example of one that should be reviewed.
I think so.
Yeah, I think this needs to, they were trying to, they were trying to stop someone.
Mind you, it's just the additional conditions for low-traffic food and beverage in business and technology. So, those don't apply to commercial medium traffic or commercial high traffic. Those are just special permits.
They're just trying to limit it in.
Those pieces are just for the business and technology.
There used to be a bar at the airport that was very popular, good food, all that kind of thing.
This is, where was this?
It was back, it was over at the airport.
At the airport, okay.
But I'm talking back in the 80s, okay? I'm going way back. I don't remember when he ended up closing. I don't remember what year that was. It might have been like late 80s, early 90s. And then, that was it. But somebody else actually owned a bar before that bar.
But this, this one was one, it was, Marty was the code officer. And I think Ned Hickey was, I don't know. At any rate, it was a long time ago that this was last even talked about.
2011.
2011, yeah, so.
Okay.
That's about when I got on.
I would love to hear people's talking points on this, like, do you want to tackle this? I'll tackle it.
So, I wonder, do you, I wonder what year the actual Cornell started the whole Business and Tech Park with all the buildings?
That's referenced, that if you're in the Cornell Business and Tech Park, you have to abide by the Business and Tech Park.
But when did they implement those rules? Like, what year was that, that Cornell?
Business is located within Cornell Business and Tech, so the business shall comply with Cornell Business and Tech sign planned area provisions, so that's.
Okay, that's what it's about, I think.
That piece for the signage.
There was, I remember what this place, it was like the, it had the name Frog in it, I thought, this cafeteria, a cafe.
I know what you're talking about. That was, I remember.
It was like you go in and then turn, you know, go over.
Did she make Mediterranean food or something?
I don't know, but apparently, it was, it was good, but the wayfinding signage got to be a big deal. It's like, how many signs? Would there be out on Warren Road? And it was just.
So, I can understand that, right? If you look around the park, the aesthetic of the park is there's not directional signage all over the place, like, if you're going down, you know, Ithaca towards Lowe's or Home Depot and everything else, there's signage everywhere. It's very easy to find what you're looking for, but there's a lot of signage.
Well, no, at the park, though, and I was just there the other night, actually, walking, so, at the park, though, at the end of each driveway, it's got the street address. It says 20 Thornwood or 22 Thornwood, but you have no idea.
There's not a name. You don't know what.
No, you have no idea unless down there, get online and look at their directory, which I think is very outdated and hasn't been updated in a long time, or you don't know where the business is.
I thought some of those businesses did have name signs, like, Kynon.
On the building, some of.
Be on the building, but.
Okay.
Right, there's no wayfind, right, you're not gonna, like, when you pull into, you know, the marketplace where Aguas, right? There's no plan sign area that says, here's a big sign, and here's everything in here.
Right.
Yeah.
Like, I don't even think there's a sign for the Tompkins County Health Department, now that I think about it.
So, it's controlled by, it's a plan sign area.
Has a plan sign area, so you need to be within those regulations as well.
And I don't know what that is.
But that's regulated by us.
But that's just in the Cornell Business and Tech, yeah.
Right, but that's regulated by the planning, well, by the village.
Is it? It is by us, right?
Yeah, they have a plan sign area.
Okay, so.
Very restrictive, not encouraging people to open any other business up there for low-traffic.
And do we, as a village, do we want to not encourage people to do stuff there, or do we want to? Or do we want to encourage, or do we want to be more neutral about that? This is not, this is a, this is just a hypothetical. I don't, I'm not looking for an answer right now, but, right, those are the options. Keep it the way it is, be more, you know, progressive about doing things, Keep it the way it is, be more, you know, progressive about doing things, or be a little more neutral and not so restrictive.
Oh, I think we should be more progressive.
I agree with that, but.
For whoever tackles that part, I think that would be some great talking points.
Aren't there a lot of empty buildings there?
Yeah, how many of those buildings, it's really hard to tell who's still in business over there.
Three and a half.
Three and a half?
Out of empty buildings. Oh, boy. Sorry.
Three and a half are empty?
Yeah.
I've had to guess eight.
Okay.
Okay, so about half.
Okay.
That's a lot.
So what do people think about, so that's, that's just Business and Technology Park. What about low-traffic food and beverage with a special permit in commercial, medium traffic and commercial, high traffic?
Well, all these would make sense. Yes, I do too. As long as you don't have these restrictions.
My question would be, do we want to consider it in commercial low traffic?
That's what I was thinking.
It is low-traffic food and beverage. And at the time, we didn't have a commercial low-traffic.
I'm having a hard time.
No, we didn't have CM.
We didn't have CMT, we didn't have medium.
Medium.
Which one is the, all in that area?
Yep.
CLT. Given the type of businesses that are there, yeah.
Commercial low-traffic is like the lightest.
All of that.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Right out that window.
Yeah.
Now, I do remember, does this allow drive-through?
No.
This one does not, because that was a question right over.
That's the third one down. It's kind of move like this.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
This one.
Oh.
Yeah, I think that that could fit in commercial low-traffic also.
I do too.
I don't think there's concerns about that. I think that that might help more with some of the available space in the village and not be detrimental to, you know, the kind of overall plan that we're moving or suggesting we move towards.
I don't know about that area though. There's a lot of things in that area that I didn't.
There?
In the pink area there.
The light pink?
The low-traffic area.
Yeah, well, that would be where.
There's a lot of things up there that you could realize.
You have to be careful if there's, if it's near residential, it's only.
Yeah, I mean, well, it's just below the Janivar neighborhood.
But it would be allowed.
So I will say this, having previously.
But what also would be nice for those in residential, to just go walk through.
So having previously been a resident of the Janivar area and then the next part up from Janivar, we walked down here regu, a lot of us who used to live there, we don't live there anymore, but a lot of us when we were younger, when we had kids, when we didn't have kids, we had to walk all the way to the mall to get to those places or down to like Kay House. And we had to cross 13. And that kind of sucks when you have kids not to.
Mm-hmm.
So it would have been nice if there was something a little bit closer, whether it was to get food or things like that. Like I love the fact that there's a Mamassori up there. My children, well, one of them went there. It was great being able to walk through the village to get them there and not have to cross here.
Right.
It might, you know, I would.
No, I agree with you.
Clearly I have a bias, but I would say that that would have been beneficial for me and other folks that I knew that lived up there at the time.
No, and I, I agree with you. It would, I remember when East Point first opened, you know, we had quite a friendly community back in the early days. Everybody kind of like was friends. And there were a number of times when people would say, it's too bad there's not a bar and restaurant in the neighborhood, like, because we wouldn't have to go anywhere, especially like during COVID times.
Oh, yeah, well.
I know, but, but this is before COVID started. But multiple times people said, oh, it'd be really nice to have this here or this here, like have it all like down the street somewhere, you know, where we could just walk.
Well, and even, right, and it doesn't have to be, you know, a bar restaurant, but like even a restaurant, sometimes to get food.
Or a store.
Right, something, it would, it would be beneficial. And it adds some uniqueness to, right, we don't want everything in the village there.
Right.
We want, you know, it's nice if there's little pockets. And that's what we've done here, you know, well before any of our time, you know, with the zoning, to have these kind of different areas where you can have these.
Yeah, and based on what you've just said and Lorraine what you've just said, it almost sounds like we want to think about form-based.
I was just thinking.
It's sound.
Because form-based would, as long as it fits in with the kind of character of the neighborhood.
Form?
Form-based zoning. So the idea is that, you know, basic, it's, it's not going to give you a lot of restrictions on use as long as the form of your building complies with what's in the, its surrounding neighborhood. So you could have a building that looks like a, you know, a house, but it becomes, but it has the kind of forms of a house and the shape and the size and the scale of the rest of the neighborhood, but it has a different kind, it has any kind of use that you want it to have.
That would be cool.
Yeah.
And so many, like for using that neighborhood for an example, so many people walk that neighborhood.
Absolutely.
So many people. And, you know, they walk Beaumont like crazy. And unfortunately, you know, there's only a sidewalk part, part of Beaumont, which is unfortunate. But when we talked about 20 Beaumont, I have to bring that up, but that would be a perfect place in that little cove.
To have stuff.
It's in that wooded area to have a coffee shop in there.
People walk for exercise or they walk to get somewhere. Where are they getting?
Yeah, a lot of people walk up to the post office, you know, but.
You don't need a supermarket in every one of these neighborhoods. That's good for something to be central.
That also, her point about form-based, maybe doesn't work right like that. Or it doesn't, better not look like that.
But, so to get back on track, sorry. But commercial low-traffic sounds like it's a maybe, right?
Yeah, that'd be a strong maybe.
High-density residential? I mean, that's kind of in the similar vein about what we're just talking about up near Beaumont.
Well, wait a minute, didn't we already decide it should go into low-traffic?
Yes. But what about high-density residential? Is, what about that? The kind of next step in that progression?
Well, a lot of it has to do with, you know, someone be sure that all you have to do is protect the intrusion against, you have to have your buffering with the residential and commercial, which we have in our code. We have to just be sure, enforce all that so that people don't have too much noise and light and whatever coming into their yards.
Yeah.
Well, and I think if you look at where, you know, like HDR and CLT and Business and Technology, the intersections of those, right, as you start talking about them are fewer.
Right.
And is it okay there, right? Can those, those kind of protections and things that we're talking about be offered there?
Yeah.
Lorraine's doing the same thing I just did, other than actually searching them, where do these meet? Yeah.
I don't know about high-residential. I live in Lansing West, have for a long time. And I'm thinking, it would be nice to have something, as you're all describing, that's close by, like the Ithaca Coffee Shop, which recently left. But I don't want it like in or near the apartment complex or the condos. You want it to be, stay as a residential community, but be nice to have something close by you can walk to. You know, some people walk across the bridge over to Target or used to go to Applebee's, but.
Well, and I have to imagine, and I have to imagine that's the reason, right? That we don't just say, oh, well, we have high-density residential, we don't need these traffic. I mean, that's why there is a low-traffic. It's the same, you know, the kind of buffering steps between low, medium and high residential, same sort of thing. I think that makes sense.
Yeah, because I thought I was hearing some discussion about allowing low, low-traffic restaurants, you know, in high-density residential. I wanted to come out right away and say, I don't think that's a good idea.
Sure.
Well, the other thing too, because you make a point that we've got some spots where high-density, commercial high-traffic and high-density meet each other without a buffer zone.
Yeah.
So maybe it's a situation where those would be the places that are more appropriate to have that kind of other use.
Yeah, maybe, maybe the Lansing West is a good example. I mean, it's Trippamah Road separates it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think it sounds like two things. One, maybe commercial low-traffic is a good place to allow low-traffic food and beverage with a special permit. And two, the special permit with conditions in Business and Technology, those conditions need to be reviewed because some of them are maybe antiquated or no longer applicable.
Or, and, and, yes, and maybe within the high-density residential, you know, because a couple of you have talked about how nice it would be to have a thing there. Maybe that becomes a special permit with conditions. And we write new conditions so that we protect the kinds of things that you're talking about, Jim, yet we still allow some sort of cafe or gathering space that could serve that neighborhood, those neighborhoods.
As a standalone, as opposed to mixed use.
Right.
Right.
Right, because we're trying to stand alone.
Well, and I think as you look at those areas too, there are some places like right in, in Lansing West, there's not a standalone there that you're going to put that in. It doesn't exist there. So it wouldn't happen there.
Today, that's true, but, you know, you never.
But ten years from now, who knows?
Right, it's no different than, you know, the PDA here where we did a carve-out where it was going to be residential and then it got carved out for, you know, future, yeah.
Yeah.
Which again, didn't happen, but, but I think, but that might be a good exercise just to go through. And let me finish this up after this comment with maybe a next step. It might be a good exercise to go through to say, well, what if we did introduce, we don't want to just rubber-stamp it and say, oh, sure, special permit. What if we do review the, you know, the special permits with conditions that we have, because clearly we found one that's kind of old. But what if we did at least go through the exercise of saying, well, what would it look like if we did want to allow this in high-density residential with conditions? What would some of those conditions look like? It might lend itself well to some other areas, even though the general feeling is maybe we wouldn't want to go forward with that. And the reason I say that is maybe, so this one's, clearly the first two are a little easier. This one's, you know, generated a lot more discussion. What if we get two or three of us between, I don't want to say this meeting and the next meeting, but this meeting and maybe two meetings from now to tackle just low-traffic food and beverage, and I'm happy to participate, reviewing the special permit conditions for Business and Technology and just kind of considering what some conditions might be for high-density residential if we did want to do that. I think those would be some good, a good discussion that we can come back, we can report on and say, here's what we talked about, here's things to think about as we really do now break up and start to tackle other chunks of the charter uses. Thoughts on that? Does anyone want to do it with me or am I going to do it alone?
Oh, no, we won't.
Not that I would volunteer anybody else, but I think, I think, like, it sounds like you and I and Lorraine have a similar point of view on that, but Jim, you have a very different point of view about that. So it might be very good to get your point of view on what to allow in high-density residential.
And I'm kind of impartial towards it, so how about Jim, I, and one of the three of you?
Yeah.
Well, you know, it doesn't have, we can do it in person. I'll schedule something or I'll work with, you know, whoever the three of us are to try to figure out a good time for us to meet a couple of times. It's not going to happen in one week. Oh, yeah, can we, oh, we can't do that. Okay. Okay, so Jim and, how about Jim and me?
How about that?
There you go. I'll work.
You forced it.
There you go.
So who's on this besides me?
Jim's like, what did I just get voted?
Who's the third person? Third person. It just has a public meeting before.
Good point.
Jim and I'll chat about it and I'll be the, I'll be the advocate for what Jim doesn't want. He can be the advocate for what Jim doesn't want. We'll come up with just some, and we will review obviously what's in Business and Technology.
Well, one of the things is we don't want any trees lined up in a row.
Okay, do you think it would be good in?
Trees lined up.
Helping human services?
Yeah, what about helping human services?
What about?
Having low traffic.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see why not. I think, right, if we're already saying, you know, yeah, I think that would be.
Yeah, I'd put that regular special permit for those too.
Yeah.
For the last two categories, for RSH and HHS, right?
Research is, not research, research is like a, I got to read more up about research anyway.
It's just a very small section. I've never quite answered.
And most of it is a unique natural area, so you couldn't do anything.
It's a brown road extension off of like by the airport there. By the airport, yeah.
This is a technology.
Bird sanctuary, thank you.
I was going to say it's near.
It's just a chunk of it.
The lab of ornithology.
Okay, so not that.
But that's across the.
It is across.
South of Trippamah or north of Trippamah?
It's north.
It's on the map.
It's, it's this light green corner.
See, see where the airport, the far right, yeah, Lorraine will point to it. There you go. That's it right there. That's the only one.
Oh, okay, so it is, it is south of Trippamah.
And what is, what is that zone for?
What is the lab of ornithology zone for? What zone is that?
I guess research.
It would be research.
But they have a store in there, you know?
I don't know if, is all of the lab of ornithology.
Some of it isn't because.
In there, yeah, that's.
No, part of it is not in the village.
Oh.
Because when we're going to do that battery storage.
Probably Cuba Heights or is it Tonne Dridin?
They, part of it was, we had to get involved somehow, but it turned out the actual, I don't know what.
I would really avoid that area because it's at least 60% wetlands.
Just leave it, don't.
I think that's Tonne Dridin anyway, isn't it, over there?
Some of it.
Not to, not to squash the conversation, but right, to get us back on track.
Yeah.
Okay, so Jim and I will meet, we will talk about potential conditions for high-density residential for low-traffic food and beverage. And we will also review the conditions for that in Business and Technology. And if it's not ready at the next meeting, it will be ready at the one after that, because I would like to move forward. But I have a feeling Jim and I are going to have to meet more than once to talk about this.
Because I don't want to miss this, because this is one Jim won't.
That's right, and you both won't be at the, yeah, so we'll push it till the meeting after that for Jim and I to report back on what we chat about.
And I'm not going to be physically present.
Yeah, we can do it over Zoom, that's fine. It's just a discussion. Yeah, for, for us chatting, we can do it over Zoom. And then we'll wait until the meeting, the official planning board meeting that you're both back at, whether it's, whether you're both officially voting members, whether you're here or on the internet. On the internet? Wow, that sounded great. Online too, to talk about the internets.
Did we ever talk about, I had notes, we talked about this like way back in, was it the March meeting or whatever? I had a note on here about the Alcoholism Council.
About what?
The rehab, what did we decide about that? We were talking about where that should go in here, right?
I don't think it's been discussed or thought.
No, we didn't make any.
We didn't, right? We didn't, and dispensary. I think you might have brought that up, right?
Drug and alcohol?
Drug and, well, and then dispensary too. Oh, like, we don't have any in the village, but what if somebody came?
What if somebody did, Jim?
Yeah.
I think we did, did get voted aloud. It would be a lot. Yeah, we just, yeah, you could fry it.
So there might need to be uses that we add.
Yeah.
Right.
We'll tackle this first.
Okay. Anything else on village code changes and corrections? I am going to.
Actually, I like that discussion. I like this structure.
Yeah, I think, and we can add to that, but it's at least the beginning of, here's things to consider. And I'm sure after Jim and I have a chat, there's probably going to be other things that we'll want to consider for our all existing condition review and new condition review.
Yeah, and, and not that I want to cheat off somebody else's homework, but there are other places in the area that have updated their code recently, so it might be worthwhile to take a peek at some of those updates that have been made and see how, you know, what they've added.
Yeah.
Okay. I do want to flip the trustee report and other business on the agenda. So just because, yeah, just because. So, the next item on the agenda is the trustee report. So, the last trustee meeting was the reorg meeting. I did log on, and I think Michael was there, I know Natalie was there. They, pull it up, so they, they did, you know, they did review their minutes. There was a public comment about a former village employee and how there had been some changes to healthcare reimbursement and things like that. So, that was in the first probably 20 minutes of the meeting. They, they did adjourn to executive session to discuss that and to discuss, I think, probably the appointment that we had passed along. I did not know how long that was gonna take, so I left, and then when I went back to record, and they did mention this at the beginning, they were having problems with the video, so there was no video. They were having problems with the microphone, so they were running the audio off the laptop. It wasn't great, so even if you go back and try to listen to that meeting, it's pretty hard.
It's pretty hard, but I could pick up bits and pieces, and then I was like, oh, this is.
The high points are, and I'm gonna ask some other people to, to fill in anything else, but the, the reorg meeting happened the way that the reorg meeting normally happens. People got appointed to things. I think the most important thing for the village, obviously, and I mentioned it earlier, for the planning board, is that Yemila did get appointed a full member of the planning board. So, that does mean that we are looking for an alternate for right now, and we'll have some more discussion about that later. But if anybody else who was there wants to fill in, and if not, I know Kathleen might have some things she wants to fill in or could fill in, but I'll leave it open to you, because it was pretty hard.
There was a reimbursement request regarding a retired employee's health insurance plan. They decided to grant his request, and we will be rewriting the policy to make it more clear as to the intent to allow his requests to be granted in the future. And, yeah, then we just went through the organizational meeting. It was quite long, it was about two hours.
It's always the longest meeting of the year for the trustees, for sure.
But Carolyn was appointed deputy mayor, you know, Jody was appointed as clerk. Mike was appointed to his position, so they just went through.
Thank God.
Oh, yeah, I didn't even think about that. I guess I was appointed as chair.
And Lisa got reappointed for her in board.
So, it was a lengthy meeting, very pro forma.
Okay.
Ronnie did alert people that there was some vandalism to his car and to be on the lookout.
Oh, where was his car parked?
Outside of his house, and there is a line cut. The speed sensor line was cut. And they think potentially the person was unsophisticated and was attempting to cut the brake line. So, there was like a lot of damage.
Were they trying to get his catalytic converter or whatever? I mean, he's.
That's what, that's what he might have thought, but the police officer said, no. Like, they only cut this one line, and his, all the sensors started going off in his car, so like, there's no cruise control, there's no nothing. And he realized it as he was going down east shore, whatever that road is. So if it had been the brake line, it would have been very bad.
So they must have, they must have, they must have been after something, though. I don't think they would have.
Yeah.
Oh, they might not know that there's no catalytic converter in there.
Oh, right, right. They were just probably like, oh, this car is out.
Yeah, so we just want everyone to be on, keep reported to the sheriff's office. They have.
Oh, I hadn't, I hadn't heard anything on that.
Just for people to be.
Park in your garage.
Or get cameras. I think Ronnie's gonna get a camera.
Close the garage door.
Yeah, he's gonna be.
No, no similar, no others in the report.
I remember in past years, again, not, not very recently, but in my 30-plus years there at Lansing, periodically there have been, they've notified residents of, hey, there have been instances of vandalism or break-in, or attempted break-ins or stuff like that, so.
There was a report recently, not in the village, but in downtown Ithaca, in the Green Street parking garage. Someone went out to their car, and it was up on cinder blocks, and their catalytic converter was gone.
Yeah, there's that catalytic.
And that, that just happened, still, that happened less than a month ago.
Wow.
So, other business, I will go around first. I know that we do have somebody here to speak about potential interest in the planning board, but I'll go around with the, the other members of the board first. So, Lorraine?
So, since we're speaking about where Ronnie lives, I just want to mention, I've been walking a lot down the new sidewalk. People drive down through there like, I can't even tell you, 50 miles an hour. And, and the cops did used to sit down there, but they don't anymore, I think, ever since that one townhome was built or whatever. I don't see the cops sit there. They used to always park kind of in the trees, you know? But the other day, I had just come down the sidewalk and came around the bend on Graham Road, heading towards Wakefield, is it? And this car flew by me, probably 50 miles an hour, and I thought to myself, I hope nobody's coming around that corner. And the next thing I know, I hear loud screeching, and I turn around, I'm, I'm waiting for the crash, right? And his car is going sideways. And I thought he was gonna actually end up in the yard of that White House, right on the, right on the corner. Anyway, I was like, I kept waiting for the smash, but there was no smash, and I was grateful for that, but I'm like, this is crazy.
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't matter, right? It's a reduced speed up near, what is it, NCS or whatever the, the school is up there, but after that, it's a 30 mile an hour zone, but my road's a 30 mile an hour, or, or 30.
I was gonna say mine too.
Right, yeah, it's, right, that's not, that's not a village enforcement. We can, you know, you can call the sheriff, you can let them know what you saw, you can pass the information along to them, and they might be able to put a patrol there more often, but unfortunately, yeah, it's a, you know, without a police force here in the village.
I know. There are lots of traffic calming things that we could do.
So, we've talked about that there before, but right, you can't just put a traffic calming device in the middle of the road for no reason. You put traffic there to, or a device there to calm traffic if there's a crosswalk, if there's a stoplight, if there's, right at crossing somewhere. You just can't put speed bumps right there in the middle of the road.
No, 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 there, there are lots of other things that we can do design-wise that, that change the, because anytime you have a long straight stretch, people pick up speed, so there are, one of the strategies that people do that, that's pretty non-obtrusive, is, is basically have your road going straight, and then you just have it cant over a little bit, like half a lane's distance. So, you do this, and it doesn't really impact too much, because you've got enough room. So, it's a little bit wider on the one side and kind of closer to the, you know, property on this side. And then you kind of bring it back, and then you do that again somewhere else, so that the road isn't just a straight line. And it's a fairly unobtrusive way to change the dynamics of a road, because when people have to do this, they go slower. Even it's only by the four feet.
Well, you know, every time I go to BJ's, I think, and I, like I said, I'd like to see a sign that says, now leaving village property. But the potholes certainly slow you down.
That they do.
That's for sure. The only, the other thing I wanted to mention, not to change the subject, but just quickly, so we can get through this, was, I don't know if anybody saw that article about the Ithaca roller derby, losing their space at the mall.
At the mall, yeah.
Did you see it? I mean, I know we've talked about this before, but what are they doing over there? And is there any way, like, there needs to be some kind of communication, and I didn't know if I should write to Ronnie and say, you know what? I mean, this would be something, I don't think the code officer should be responsible, and I don't think he should have to have the responsibility to communicate with all these property managers. The mayor needs to have a relationship with these people. How can we find out what the mall is doing? Because if they're, if they're making it difficult for someone to pay rent to stay there, I mean, they were gonna, what, it was quinduple, which is five times the amount of what they were paying, I mean. But Cornell, of course, leased that space for the next year, for the dump and run. Okay.
For the roller derby.
For the what?
Yeah, so the roller derby people are out of a space.
The old, old Navy.
The old, old Navy, yeah. But, you know.
Yeah, I, so.
You know where I'm going with this, though.
So definitely not a, that is, right, it's not a code issue. But I will, when I send Ronnie a note, I will.
I mean, I think, maybe he should invite them to come to our joint meeting in July and say, we'd like to hear, what are your plans for the mall? With so much empty space there. I mean, I don't know. The, the other thing too is, if we would like to have a meeting like that, where we, we talk about different options, it might be worth, I know Heather McDaniel just left the IDA, so I don't know if there's been a new appointment yet for that position, but whoever the new president of the IDA would be a wonderful person to invite to a meeting like that, where we can talk about what is and is not possible, in terms of like what the city, what the village can do. Sound like a.
I don't have anything.
I was gonna say Pat, Lorraine, or Yemila, sorry.
Other than my poor daughter is on the roller derby team, and now they're at Cas.
Oh.
It was actually really, it was the most restrictive thing. They were only allowed to be in the space from 5:30 PM until whatever the, there's a junior start, then wherever the adults end, I think it's at 9:00, from 5:30 to 9:00 PM on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So they were paying that heavy a rent and only allowed two evenings a week. They, they were actually not legally allowed to enter the space at other times. Really?
Really?
There's like nobody in the mall. I mean, that's crazy.
Has, has the roller derby found a new home yet that you know?
They're practicing at Cas Park, and they're having bouts at Cas Park as well.
Their what?
They're having their bouts at Cas Park as well, the rink. But that's, again, it's only a short-term thing, because when the rink turns to ice.
Then you can't do that. That would be interesting, roller derby.
Did you notice that in that article, whoever, I can't, I don't know who the reporter was that wrote it, mentioned the bombing group in there, the proposed bombing group and the, the space at the other end of the mall, which, I'm surprised they even mentioned that, like.
I mean, the, the decks.
Yeah.
That's, that end of it.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm assuming that at the trustee meetings, we passed our code over to them, right, the tree code?
It would, yeah, it did not get put on.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, it was too long of a meeting to, yeah. Take up other items. The reorg meeting is, we're gonna do the reorg thing, since it's long, you know? You've probably been to one before.
I just was wondering, because I realized that I had not gotten in touch with the tree people regarding the digital thing. I mean, I know how much it's gonna cost, but.
It should be scheduled at the next meeting.
Okay.
Natalie?
I have nothing.
Nothing really, but only to, to make a comment on, I mean, to be honest, the mall has no obligation about what they're gonna do or anything like that. It would be of a courtesy, it wouldn't be anything that we could say, hey, we wanna know what you're doing.
No, I know, but I think there should be some sort of relationship and.
It can't hurt to just, if you really want to meet with success, and we want you to meet with success, and just keep sort of on that periodically, just to, like you said, have a relationship. It sends to me.
Except they don't wanna meet with success, they wanna make the tax write-off for their other companies.
Yes.
Just like the parking lot over there that's not been repaired yet, but yet today, I see, and yesterday and today, half of the Cuba Mall parking lot is being resurfaced. Now, I don't know if that has to do with Ross or not, but.
I think that's, it seems to be right in front of Ross, yeah.
Yeah, but it was also in the Friendly's, Old Friendly's parking lot area too.
Oh, it was?
Yeah. And resurfacing doesn't trigger a special permit, so.
No.
I don't know, we should ask Mike. I think they're resurfacing, right, Mike? They're resurfacing over there, right? They, they repaved. Yeah, they repaved.
Yeah, it looks like resurfacing.
Yeah. Yeah, no trees. It would be, it would be very nice if we could have some mechanism when they resurface to include.
I drove past, when I was coming back up from Baltimore yesterday, I drove past some mall. The mall looked like.
A park?
No, a park in a good sense.
That's what I mean.
No, so it, there were some old anchor stores that had clearly been out of business, but boy, did they have a lot of trees out in the parking lot. It looked really nice, and it was a sunny, green, beautiful day. It did look very nice.
Where, where was that? Do you know where?
Between here and Baltimore, Maryland. Yes, I'd have to look it up on a map.
When I've been down in, you know, the DC area, northern Virginia, Maryland, the aesthetics of, of buildings, shopping centers, even if they're little ones, are much better. The buildings are attract, tend to be attractive, well landscaped, trees.
Well, I, I keep saying too, is every time I go down to City Harbor Guthrie.
That looks nice down there.
Their parking lot is nice. It is just a nice, and it's functional. There's one little problem they did, but I keep complaining one of these days, I'll fix it. They have a, a ramp with the, you know, with the bubbly things that goes into a parking space. As opposed to having bottlers to prevent, keep it open, do you know what I mean?
But, so, nothing else from any other board members?
So we're, we aren't hearing anything yet about the other side of Park, Park Road? Okay.
So the last item that I wanted to bring up under other business, yes, other business, is that at the last meeting, we did have a presentation from somebody interested in potentially joining the planning board. We do have, and I have an update on some other things too, but we do have one more person tonight that we had reached out to. We discussed at the last meeting, who had expressed some interest, and we did get ahold of them, is Jonathan Jeski. So Jonathan, if, if you'd like to stand up and come up to the podium there, just so we can hear your voice. But really informal, just, the board members might have questions and things like that, but if you could just sort of talk about maybe why you're interested in, you've sat through the whole meeting, so you've gotta be interested somehow, but. Yeah, just, you know, just a little bit about yourself and, you know, why you're interested in, you know, being part of the, you know, kind of village of Lansing local government, whether it's the planning board, or there's always a thousand opportunities to do here.
Sure. Yeah, so as you said, my name is Jonathan Jeski, and I have been in Ithaca for about a year now. I bought a place upon Cuyahoga Heights back in September, actually with the help of Natalie, which is how I got introduced to this, this panel, to this committee. And it's a really awesome, quiet little place in, in New York, specifically the village of Lansing. And so, being able to sit down with fine folks like you all, I mean, it's pretty obvious, like, this is a very, I mean, it's formal, but it's also not informal. Talking a lot from your heart about what to bring to the area, what the vision is for this, 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 this place to live, and how we keep it with that vision. And so, I just feel like-minded with a group of folks like that, and with the same, the same sort of vision, yeah.
What all questions?
Jonathan, can you tell us a little bit about, tell us a little bit about you, like, what brought you to Ithaca? Was it employment? Do you, are you a faculty member at Cornell? Like, what do you do?
Yeah, so, Ithaca was on a short list that my wife and I came up with as a great place to raise children. So we were fortunate enough to be able to sort of pick the location in which we wanted to raise our kids. And we met folks who had raised their kids in Ithaca, and it just always comes up five stars. Everybody always says it's a great place to raise kids. And so, we came and spent some time here over the last couple of years to validate that, and fell in love with Ithaca, and we moved up, and our kids are really blossoming, so, yeah. That's how we ended up in Ithaca.
Okay.
Where did you move from?
We were in Florida, central coast of Florida.
Oh, gosh. That is, that is a big.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's a big change, huh?
We just did our first winters.
I was gonna say, see.
This was a.
This was a cold?
It was cold. Not a lot of snow, yeah.
It was a cold winter this year, colder than usual, for, for extended periods of time. It was, because in the past, it would be 20 degrees, and then it would be, but no, this year was a long, so it was a good test.
I had heard from my Realtor that snow blowers have not been used much in the last couple of years, and he typically goes around with his, his yard blower. The leaf blower, and, and just takes the dust off of the driveway, and then that's what the last couple of winters have been. That was definitely not the case this year.
It's hard to blow, I saw you driving. What's your background? And so, and I ask because on the board here, we've got a vast background from people who work in businesses, own a business, are in the legal profession, know a ton about landscaping, know nothing about landscaping, know lots about IT. I'm just curious, so yeah, but, so what's your, what's your background in? I'm just curious.
So I am a mechanical engineer, integration and aerospace engineer by trade. My degrees got me through a lot of mechatronics and robotics stuff, but that was not really put into practice outside of grad school. Yeah, just a lot of integration and tests in engineering and sitting in groups like this and solving a lot of problems.
What other questions from folks?
Have you ever served on a board before?
Not for a government, no.
That should, I should say. I would say qualify that, okay.
This wouldn't be a first, yes, but I feel like I was keeping up with what it is you guys were all talking about.
Oh, I'm sure you were. We actually have fun.
And there's, and there's good training opportunities.
There is, the, yeah, the New York Planning Federation, they do a, the first year that I was on the board, I think, I don't remember if I was an alternate. I went to the Planning Federation. Wow.
Well, it really is energizing.
It really is, yeah. And it's the full gamut from new board members to people that have been there forever. It's, it is outstanding, yeah. Natalie, any questions?
No.
Michael? Chairman Lorraine, anything else?
Don't have any more, no.
No, I mean, if, if you stayed through that whole meeting and.
You're still, you wasn't like.
Encouraged?
I know, it's like.
We're not making it interesting enough.
Sometimes they're more interesting, sometimes they're less interesting. So I guess I have one more question, you know, ultimately, you know, if, you know, we'll have a discussion, but would you be, you know, be interested? We've got an alternate position open, which is a great way to learn. Is that something you, you know, be interested in us recommending to the board if we decide to?
Yeah, sure. What, I mean, what is the general process of getting onto the board as, as you're talking about recommendations?
So, so right now, everybody who's at the table, well, other than legal counsel and the code officer, we're full members. We usually also have an alternate position. The alternate position, they're expected to come to all the meetings. If there's a regular member who can't attend that night, we'll appoint the alternate as a voting member for that night. And then when a position opens up on the board for the alternate member to move up to a full member, you know, we'll have a discussion, we'll evaluate that, we typically do that, and then we look for a new alternate.
Or if they prefer to stay.
Or if they prefer to stay as an alternate, we'll look for a new, you know, full board member. But the trustees are the group that actually do appoint members to the planning board, and so what we'll do is, you know, we usually have discussions. So at the last meeting, we had a discussion, we had a board member who left to become a trustee. Yemila was the alternate. We had a chat, and she said, yes, I'd love to be a, you know, love to be a full board member. So we talked about it, and we made a recommendation to the trustees to appoint Yemila as a full voting member, and they acted on that at the last meeting. So it would be a similar, you know, similar kind of process. We would, you know, make a recommendation or, or not make any recommendation to the trustees, and they would decide to act on that. Generally, they, you know, they take, take our advice, because we're, we're the ones that are working on stuff, so, yeah.
Yeah, makes sense.
That's the general process. And yeah, you know, we, we meet twice a month. There's usually a couple of meetings throughout the year that we cancel. There are some subgroups that meet for various things throughout the course of the year, but it's, you know, it's a few hours a month of, of work to.
Well, it's like anything, it's, if something catches your interest, you're probably gonna put more time into it than you expected. I mean, we, that's the full tree thing, for example, yeah, but there's plenty to look at, as you're probably gathering. There's some really interesting areas that, and I think times are changing, and one of the, it's, it's nice to see someone who is younger, because your future here is longer than some of the others, but we've been here for a while. So, and, and change is important to be, incorporate what people want.
And it's, it's a great way to get to know the village too. You know, even without, even if you just came and sat in meetings, it's a great way to understand the village. But, you know, I've got young kids too, it's a great way to, you know, kind of get your input into the village and help guide things for, you know, what and where we each come from, a kind of different area of the village, and have different ideas and things like that, but it's a great way to integrate those all together and, you know, really help develop and move the village forward in a, you know, kind of united way that takes lots of people's opinions into account. Not just, hey, look at us all from over there, and, you know, I'll pick the, I don't know, you know, Lansing West, look at us all. You know, we, we all think the same thing, and that's what the rest of the village thinks. No, it's a, it really is a good, you know, representation of the village from everybody, and has been for a long time.
In the last two hours, it felt like it was, honestly.
And it's interesting too, there's during, during the course of the year, there's kind of for us slower times or busier times, right? We're moving into that building season, there's generally a lot more here, because things can be accomplished more during the summer than during the winter. Not to say that we're not busy during the winter, I mean, we spent.
We weren't too busy. We did a lot of.
Seven months during the winter, working on the tree law and the solar law and all kinds of stuff, so, yeah. And we've got a whole list of other, the local laws to work on, so, yeah.
Yeah, and I think with the, like, from, from an engineering point of view, like, this is integrating policy. And so, I mean, you, I'm sure you know that, like, when you make this tiny adjustment over here, everything changes.
Oh, no, I broke everything.
And, and that happens a lot here. I mean, if you heard us talk about the solar law, we're like, do we have or or and in that sentence? And what is the implication? So it really, there's a lot of minutia in it, but it's actually kind of fascinating how even small changes can kind of shift the development of the village as a whole.
The details of meaning.
Yeah, very much so.
And we have good progress.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, we have, because I think of looking at the comprehensive plan, but, you know, just like our tree code and the solar code, and just even the past year, we, we managed to get some stuff done.
Do I have one more question?
Yeah.
Do you have individual responsibilities, is, or is this more of like a cohesive, everybody has the same group of responsibilities?
Yeah, other than when we break up into, if we're gonna, like, Jim and I are gonna focus on a couple of things that we talked about tonight, you know, that's for Jim and I, we'll chat about it, but then we come back and we, you know, we recommend things to, to the whole group before we recommend things to the trustees. There are some commissions and things like that that you could potentially get on that, that's.